Welcome to the August 23rd, 2012 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Robert Evans, who is our senior pastor of Bethel Temple of Longview. Would you please stand?
Let's all please bow our heads. Our God and our Father, we're so extremely thankful and appreciative to you that even though you are our Creator and we're your creatures, but yet you give us this privilege to come with confidence to the throne of grace. So I lift up our mayor, I lift up our council persons, I lift up our police department, and our entire city government, and it's all the citizens, that you will guide us with wisdom that comes from above, with all wisdom and spiritual understanding, that every decision that must be made, it will be made with the whole in mind, knowing that even in our diversity, you have called diversity to bring about a unified effort that you can bless and prosper our city. Longview, a city of vision, give us vision that comes from you and give us the courage to walk therein. We thank you for that, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Always good to see you. That's right, man. That's right. Okay. Before we get started, I'd like to make an announcement regarding the West Nile virus. We've all heard about the West Nile virus cases in recent weeks that have been reported in the East Texas area and across the state of Texas. We want to encourage our residents to take precautions and please follow the four D's: Drain any standing water around your residence; dress in long-sleeved shirts and pants; avoid being outdoors during the dusk-to-dawn hours; and defend yourself with insect repellent that contains DEET. Also, please assist your elderly neighbors. Make sure they're aware of the concerns and make sure they have screens intact on doors and windows. Our parks will remain open, but we encourage people to use precaution whenever they are outdoors. City crews are currently treating suspected areas and will soon begin citywide mosquito spraying at night. However, what you can do as individuals through basic prevention is much more effective than what we can do as a city. So please use precaution, take steps to prevent mosquitoes at your residence. We have more information and you can contact the Environmental Health Department at (903) 237-1285, or visit longviewtexas.gov. Ladies and gentlemen, this is becoming an epidemic now. We're reading about it all over the state. I know many of us know of someone that has been infected by this in the past, a very good friend of mine that went through this a number of years ago and today still continues to feel the effects of it. He was lucky that he survived. But I can assure you, I love sitting out on my porch, but make sure when you do it, especially in the afternoons late, that you cover yourself, I mean, with the mosquito spray, because they are the real deal at this point in time in this year. So please, please be careful. Okay, we're going to start with citizen comment, and I've got Gwendolyn Aiken. And I sure like her card. I'd like to be part of the solution. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Gwen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Gwen Aiken. Can you hear me okay?
Sure.
As the former vice president for the Humane Society of Northeast Texas, from June of last year through September, and as a former graduate of Leadership Longview, and also a former vet technician with over 10 years working for vets in Maryland, Virginia, West Virginia, and Texas, I'd like to respectfully submit my name for consideration to be added to your committee to add my expertise and my suggestions that I have for solutions for the shelter. And that's why I'm here tonight, to submit my name. So thank you.
I got your phone call today. I was out of town, and we shall visit with you.
Okay.
Thank you. Kelly Highcamp, thanks.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kelly Highcamp. I'm an animal welfare attorney. I'm just going to provide you with a brief explanation of what happened with the lawsuit against the Humane Society of Northeast Texas. I think we're all aware that it was filed August 8th of last year. Multiple motions were filed by council of record, and ultimately 11 months later, they produced the records. Actually, it was 12 months later, 11 months later, they agreed to produce the bank statements. It's been a nightmare getting the records from the shelter, but I'm very grateful that we now have them. And we've prepared, I've hired a financial, forensic accountant. His name is Nick Burkett. He's with Bales &amp; Company in Tyler, Texas. He's been the forensic accountant on this case throughout, and he has recently concluded his evaluation of the bank statements for the past three years, specifically on the Austin Bank account for the shelter. His report, I have, and it's fascinating and disturbing. But I was contacted by members of city council, asking for me to stand down, at least temporarily, on presenting this report today. Mr. Burkett was prepared to be with us today, but I've asked him to temporarily stand down as well, to allow the task force to address these issues within a reasonable amount of time. But I'm not aware of what those goals are, and I'm hoping that there'll be an explanation today of the task force's goals. I'm hoping that I will be advised today of the deadlines for these decisions and the importance of these decisions. I'd like to stress my continued concern that the Humane Society of Northeast Texas not be involved in a new facility. I think that it is a now-defunct entity, whether innocently or through fault of their own, I'm not commenting at this time. I'd like to start fresh. I'd like to start new, and I'd like to start with an entity that will promote harmony in our community instead of such hostility. If you have any questions for me about the lawsuit, I'm happy to answer them. Some of them have been who paid for the lawsuit. The plaintiffs were people in our community, most of them rescue, individuals who run rescues, private nonprofit rescues. The case was funded. I've paid for the forensic accountant out of my own pocket, and I haven't received a dime for that, and I'm not asking for any money. We were awarded $15,000 in expert fees, and that just goes back into the pot, from which it was taken. The plaintiffs received about $1,000 apiece, and I mean $2,000. So there are two entities, one plaintiff received nothing, by choice, elected to pass on any money. The defense was paid for because they had an insurance policy. Their attorney was covered by a policy, and the fees paid out, which we've yet to see because we have immediate settlement agreement, but we don't have a final order, I expect that to be within the next few weeks, their fees were all paid through a private insurance policy. So anyone concerned that tax dollars were used to pay for this litigation, there's no need to worry about that. I hope...
Okay. Are you, we appreciate you being here.
One more second?
Need another second?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I hope that everyone understands the importance of the Business Organizations Code, which requires nonprofits to produce and provide for the community, any member of the public, copies of their financial records for the last three years. I hope we've learned from this.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Veronica Aspen.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Veronica Aspel. I have recently moved back to Longview from Oklahoma.
See that.
And I jumped right into working with animal rescue groups through a friend of mine, and I have visited the Humane Society numerous times, wanting to work as a volunteer, and I was actually speaking with Stuart Russell in regards to being the director. In the meantime, I found out a few other things, and I've been completely and absolutely appalled at what I have seen. They're coming from Oklahoma where it's just not handled this way. Anyway, the only thing I really have to say this evening is that I would like to offer my services in any way possible, whether it's monetary or not, volunteer, whatever. I do believe, I've overheard, that there's a task force being possibly put together. My opinion is that this must be an unbiased task force, and from what I've seen at the Humane Society, anyone from the Humane Society clearly cannot come to this task force without a bias. So I just wanted to give my opinion that members of this task force should definitely not be anyone who stands to gain or lose in any way. And that's all I have to say, to be quite honest with you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ione Fried.
Good evening.
Hi there.
I was here two weeks ago, and I challenged you to come up with something that we as citizens can do to help you. And in that time, we've had a town meeting at the library, and several people did come. What I have heard is that you are forming a task force, and I again ask that it is an unbiased task force, that we have people who have no interest in the outcome of whether it is with the shelter or with not the shelter. I don't think anybody should be able to gain or lose by what we decide. The shelter has not been sufficient in the past, and unless changes are made, it's not going to be sufficient in the future. We need a bigger facility, we need something, if we're going to keep it in force, we need something to help it get through. But my whole thing is, I'm not here to shut the shelter down, I'm not here to advocate a brand-new shelter. I'm here to keep 20 dogs a day from losing their lives, 20 dogs and cats a day. I go to sleep at night crying because of these little babies that are going.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Patty Stoker.
Hi. I am just here to reiterate the fact that I feel like we also need an unbiased task force for this shelter issue, and that's really all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Clancy Cox.
Hi. I'm Clancy Cox with the Good Dog Academy. I'm an animal behaviorist and a certified instructor/trainer. I just had a couple of questions for you. I wanted to have some more specific understanding about what this task force is for.
Okay, ma'am, I'll explain that. Continue.
Okay. How long do they have to make these decisions?
Go ahead.
Okay. Also, I'd like to know the names and the affiliations of the people that are on this task force.
Okay. Is there anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards I have. Council, I think you are aware and heard of, after three years, and most of you've been here numerous times, and I applaud you, I have never, as mayor, been involved with an issue that has been harder to get my arms around, okay, because of so many factions, okay? Passionate, but not wanting to work together, okay? Can't get many of these groups in the same room, and I understand, even at the library meeting the other night, I understand there were some pretty tense moments at that. And, you know, I have tried to work, as well as other members of council, with numerous of these groups, trying to come up with a plan, a plan that was always to be a public-private partnership. We did our part. We put together plans of building a new shelter. We never got as far as a commitment from any of these other groups about what and how they were going to participate, either financially or elsewise. So here's what the plan is. The plan is to create a mayor's task force. It's called Operation Save the Animals, and that's our focus. And what I intend to do, as your mayor, and that's why I was elected, is to bring together a reasonable group of people, okay, that can sit and review all of the options, and again, I've been dealing with this for three years, with most of this council, and I have finally gotten to the point that I can't continue, you know, to, I mean, I've had people cry on the phone with me about this, and I need to go here, I need to go there. I have heard, we have heard, and this task force is going to look at turnover, I was one of the people, I talked to Kelly this morning, I'm glad you're here, Kelly, that's your right to come tell us about your lawsuit, even though I don't think it affects us, but that's fine. But the reality is, is we're going to take the next 60 to 90 days to review and look at everything that needs to be done, and then come to the council with a resolution, okay, to move forward. Now let me assure you another thing, this isn't just about the city of Longview, okay? This is an issue for Gregg County, this is an issue for numerous other cities in Gregg County. I read the article Sunday, like many of you did, and quite frankly, I didn't know that some of those cities were bringing their dogs to the animal shelter. The animal shelter wasn't built originally to take in that many animals, okay? And I don't know who made the decision to have all these other contracts, but that's, my focus is now, I know that we need a plan, we need a long-term plan, and that's how we're going to go about it. And when the membership, I'm talking and asking people, and I'm asking people from a different walk of life, too. I want some business people to help look at this, too. I want some finance people to look at this. I've got veterinarians I'm talking to, you know? I want to make sure, I've got several of them, by the way, but I want to make sure that we have a good, long-term solution, because God is my witness, I don't want to go through my last three years, you know, continuing to try to get arms around a situation like this. So that's all I have to say about it right now, and we will be, you know, bringing this committee forward here within the next two weeks, and be happy to share that with y'all, okay? Thank you. Okay. First item is presentations, and we have a presentation of a check from the East Texas Trial Lawyers Association to the Greater Longview United Way for the Mayor's Beat the Heat Project. We have Mr. Brent Gudarzy, and from the United Way, we have Liddell Kaye and Allison Pinkerton.
Right up top here.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your service, Mayor, and the conversations I've had with him. I'd also like to thank the council. What we're here for today, again, my name is Brent Gudarzy, I'm president of the East Texas Trial Lawyers Association, and we have and always have been committed to helping the good causes. And one of the causes that I discussed with the mayor was, in fact, helping people in need of fans and/or air conditioners. And of course, interesting enough, it's cooled off, and it's not as hot as it's been, which is a great thing. But the mayor brought up an important issue today when he talked about the West Nile virus, and I want to tell you that this check for $5,000, we will let you use it any way you want. If you can use it to help people who are in need, to help the elderly clothe themselves or to help them, you know, make their house insulated where they don't have mosquito problems, that's what we want the money to go to. I also want you to know on behalf of our group that the well's not dry. If in fact you can show us a need, and I know there's many needs where we can help, we're just a phone call away, and we can write another check. We appreciate each of your volunteerism and your service. And as we've stood for as long as we've been to help those in need, we appreciate the mayor, and it's an honor to be here. This is my first city council meeting in Longview to attend. You run a tight ship, and I understand that because I'm a businessman, and there's nothing more important than that, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
And again, on behalf of our group, we'll present the check to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get the mayor? I don't want to break that camera.
No, not me. Not me. All ready to negotiate? Okay, consent agenda, council, is there any item on the consent agenda council would like to pull for separate consideration? If not, may I have a motion?
Some motion.
Have a motion? Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next item, budget items, a discussion of proposed 2012-2013 budget for the city of Longview. Mr. Willard.
Mayor and council, you've had your budget books several weeks, and we've fielded some calls and answered some questions, I think, but if you have any other questions, or if the public has any questions or comments, be happy to receive those and try to get you some answers if you need those.
Council, I guess this is week four?
Something like that.
We've had, let's see, we've had our first public hearing on our proposed tax rate, et cetera. Is there any questions?
Did we get that from, I think we were questioned, proposed what the tax rate's going to be for the water when we built the plant out there? We had a projection of tax rates.
Oh, you're talking about the...
I think those, well, Keith, do you have those, or?
That was, yeah, since we built the Lake of the Pines.
There's been so much change over the years, and that's been since 1990.
Proposed scheduled rates after when we built the Lake of the Pines pipeline.
Oh, okay.
On the water rates.
You did ask me about that, and I looked at that, and there was a study done in 1995, before the bonds were issued in '98. As a matter of fact, that's, you know, now this is, we're looking at 15 years ago, and the way the debt service has worked, that debt has actually worked its way off, off the peak. It did require that the council make 9% rate increases the first three years, 6% the next three years, and then went down from there. But as the mayor was saying, councils in the past, I don't think they ever agreed to a 9% three years in a row. They went like 9, 0, 0, 13, 0, 0, 20, 0, 0, and stuff like that, so you were right.
A staggered increase.
It was a staggered increase, yes.
Staggered high.
But the debt, the debt service this year is a little bit lower than it was last year, and so, and it's going to continue being, to go down. In fact, we can look forward to 2028 when the utility's out of debt, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else in that, Mr. Frost?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When we were talking about that, though, Mr. Bonds, when we were talking about that, we also were inquiring about the projections out, like how far out they actually went from the 1995 study. What year did that actually end, like as far as the projected increases?
Well, like I said, the increases, it's a 30-year note, so it started in '98. It was refunded in 2004, so it went out another 20, so that was 2024, and we've issued a little bit of debt after that. But this year, I think the debt service is a little bit under $9 million, and like I said, it's scheduled to go down. I think the next big jump going down under $5 million is like in four or five more years. I can't remember exactly, but, you know, the rate increases that we see now are actually, you know, due to like commodities. It's electricity, chemicals, fuel, things of that nature. Like I said, I think we're doing a good job, and the debt service is actually coming down, and we're able to put money in the capital improvement fund, so we don't have to issue debt in the future.
Where we wouldn't have to raise the rate in order to pay for them.
But do we have any projections? Do we have any projections, though, like, you know, what you're referring to in regard to us being able to cash fund our projects in the future? Do you have some projections that you've already done, kind of what it would look like if we do, you know, this percent increase this year, being what, 2012 and 2013? Do we have something like that, maybe over like a five-year period? Could we have that?
Sure.
I'd like it.
Yes. It's based on projections of what we think our labor costs are going to be in a few years, where the council grants raises. We have to gamble on what we think chemicals are going to cost, what fuel's going to cost, electricity's going to cost.
Well, and the big, the big, the big thing is, Cash, is how much water we're going to sell.
And how much water.
I mean, last year versus this year, what are our sales this year versus last year during the drought?
We're actually having an average year this year, and last year was phenomenal, so that's...
And the only reason I was asking for that is because one of the things that you mentioned is that because we didn't always, or y'all didn't always, increase the rates, I'd just kind of like to know what it's going to look like maybe five years out, to reasonably be able to say, okay, yeah, we need to increase our water rates so the consumers are not all offended.
Roughly, it's like CPI or the cost, the price index, it's...
Consumer Price Index.
Consumer Price Index, yes, sir. It's...
We can, can you, can you forward that?
Sure. It's 3 to 4 and 1/2 percent, just to let you know, is what it'd be, so. But I'm sure I'll send those to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Hang on one second. I got Mr. Frost, and I'll come back over here.
Have we completed the increases due to the capacities of the meters?
Yes, yes, we have. We have finished those. The ratios are correct. That's correct. Yes, sir.
So we got that this year?
That's right. Last year was actually the last move to that. So, for example, the 5/8 inch meter is the lowest class, and the 1-inch is the next, and the 1-inch meter is two and 1/2 times the minimum cost of a 5/8. So this year's cost is across the board flat, every one, 5/8, one, one to elder.
Gary, you had a question?
I had a question.
Go ahead.
There are not going to be any 5/8 inch meters for this coming budget year, is that correct?
We do not install 5/8 inch meters anymore.
Okay, just only 1-inch?
Only 1-inch meters. That's the minimum.
And there are not going to be any more cemetery plots available, is that correct?
Now, what's that got to do with the water? We're not, oh, Gary! No, I'm sorry. I'm not exactly sure what that is. I'm not exactly sure what that is.
I think we're out of cemetery, I don't know, Shelley, help us out here.
We actually have two space lots available at White Cemetery, and we have single spaces available at Gray Cemetery.
Okay.
You planning ahead, Gary?
Gary, God, now, okay, well, y'all get way off track here. Way off track here. Okay, Gary, did you have anything else?
That's it, Mr. Frost.
Okay, you were, you were getting rid of us something.
I forgot what I was going to say. No, I forgot what I was going to say. Had to do with the water, the debt service, anyway.
Okay. I think what I'm hearing, council, is we still need Keith some, that some projection. I have personally not spoken to anyone or a citizen regarding the rate increase. I think most citizens are looking at it, the smaller amounts, and then the fact that we're looking at building a reserve so that we can cash fund future projects, because there's still things out in Mr., you know, Mr. Sims's district where we're still catching up on the size of some of the infrastructure out there that's got to be retrofitted, so we're, and we're trying to cash fund that as we go, so.
I know what I was trying to say. We're also thinking that will really help change the equation on these water rates is if we can find some more customers, talking about larger customers, and as we have growth, and we're talking to one entity right now about some future water sales, and if we can increase that, that'll certainly help us. We're still recovering from several, you know, a couple of lost accounts, the Strohs, a couple of others.
You know, as water, as water goes, as water goes, we're in a fantastic position for 50 years with all three of our water sources, okay? So as the Lake of the Pines facility is paid off, that rate is going to stabilize, and I would hope, again, as Mr. Willard said, as we find additional, you know, sources to sell water to, that heck, you know, the taxpayer of Longview could actually see a rate decrease because of the position that we have with the, with the water rates. So, council, anything else? Next item is a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. City council vote on the tax rate on Thursday, September the 13th, at 5:30 PM in the City Hall of Counsel chambers at 300 West Cotton Street, Longview, Texas. Angela Cohen?
Good evening. State statute requires that a municipality hold two public hearings on the property tax rate. This is the first of the required hearings. The proposed tax rate is 50.09 cents per 100 valuation. The vote to adopt the tax rate will be held on... The vote to adopt the tax rate will be held on Thursday, September 13th, 2012, at 5:30.
Okay. Questions of Ms. Cohen? Not this item requires a public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Is anyone here would like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. Items of community interest. You passing? You passing?
I pass.
Oh, hold up.
I've had enough community interest this week.
I hear you. Gary? Gary?
Mr. Mayor, I got, I got a great opportunity for you.
For me?
Learn to sail. Sailing classes start in September, and the cost is $95, so you get an opportunity.
Who's teaching that class?
Uh, who's teaching that class? Longview Yacht Club.
Longview Yacht Club. Oh, along the sail.
Sail.
I thought you meant sailing. I was going to go that, I want to learn how to sail, too.
Yeah, right. You're sailing every single day, what are you talking about?
Wait, Gary, Gary, let me...
You don't know what sail is.
No, I got, I got, I got, you know, we're running good on time. I got to tell this story.
Tell it. Go ahead and tell it.
When, when I first moved up here in 1981, and of course, my accent's gotten a lot better, it's still not quite East Texas, but it's gotten a little better, but I had a hard time communicating with people up here because of my accent and their accent. So first person, a couple, my wife and I met, he called me up and said, hey, you want to go to the fire? I said, heck, yeah, I want to go to the fire. When is it? He said, Friday night. I said, where is it at? He said, it's at the fire ground. I said, okay. Well, I thought, I said, well, I thought only in Louisiana we had those bonfires at the schools and stuff. Well, next day, I ran into him, I said, man, where you said that fire is at? He said, it's at the fire ground. I said, well, I didn't know they had bonfires. He said, no, he said, it's fire over there by Maud Copse. They got them roller coasters and them Ferris wheels. I said, oh, that's a, that's a fair. That's not a fire. So that's why I was that sailing. Anyway, Ms. Casher?
How do you follow that?
I just, I want to thank Mr. Bonds, Mr. Dwayne Archer, Longview Sanitation, for all of their hard work with helping us pick up our limbs in the area and taking care of our community. Also, I'd like to thank the Longview Police Department, Chief Dingler, for everything that you do. You go above, above and beyond the call of duty. And last but not least, I also have to give a shout out to an organization. The Longview Museum of Fine Arts will host its fundraiser on Saturday night. I am so excited because I have not been able to attend one in a while. Casino night, is that Diamonds and Ice, is that what that is? Okay, Diamonds and Ice, I think. I'm probably saying Dice, Mr. Manley. Please come. I think it's $75 per person. It's going to be a great event, and I'm really fired up about it. I don't get to go anywhere anymore.
All right. Okay. Mr. Frost?
Ricardo? I am done.
Glad Mr. Richard was on the road today and hustled back and got back. Speaking of someone not being here, may I have a motion to excuse Mr. Allen?
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thursday, August 30th, at 5:30 PM in the council chambers will be a special call council meeting. In observance of Labor Day, city offices will be closed Monday, September 3rd. The sanitation department will remain on the regular trash collection schedule throughout the holiday weekend. Let me say that again. In observance of Labor Day, city offices will be closed, but the sanitation department will remain on the regular trash collection schedule throughout the holiday week. Texans Against Crime kickoff and registration event is Tuesday, September 11, 2012, from 6:00 to 7:30 at Maud Copse. The Texans Against Crime parties will take place on Tuesday, October 9th. Citizen Police Academy 2012 begins September 13th on Tuesday and Thursday nights for 6:30 to 8:30 PM for seven weeks. For more information, visit www.longviewpolice.com. And I wanted to follow up on something that Cash talked about, Chief Dingler. Tonight, we had Pastor Evans do our prayer and pledge. He organized and conducted the unity and the community marches into some of our troubled neighborhoods, and he was very, very complimentary, chief, about the great job that the police department did in helping to organize and kind of direct their activities. So thank you a bunch. Counsel, at this time, we're going to move to executive session, deliberation regarding real property under Texas Governmental Code, Section 551072, consideration of the purchase and value of real property located in Alexander Jordan survey. Counsel will not be returning for a motion.